We do have a quorum present at this time. But go ahead and proceed with the opening of the minutes. I'm going to give my miracle comments that I have tonight. So as you all know, the county has been asking that we at least talk about or visit the land banking. I shared with them that I would bring it up to you all. They're wanting to be able to, if we don't go along with it, to give them permission. So I told them I would bring it up to you all. And I spoke with Mr. Griffin about bringing somebody back in to speak with us on it. And Mr. Griffin stated that he would handle that. So I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. I sent to all of you proposal for the youth council. It's pretty much cutting. Mr. Jordan, did you get, you and Mr. Davis get one? I asked them to make sure you got a copy of it as well for putting the youth council back into place. You're muted, Mr. Jordan.
If you did, or if I, I don't recall receiving it.
Okay, it would have came from this list. If not, we'll make sure we get it back out to you. But it's just the basic guidelines, the ordinance, the bylaws, all of that, that entails having the youth council in place. And, you know, at least trying to get it up and ready to have the student senate by August. I thought it was a good time for us to go ahead and look at it around budget time. There will be a need for some monies from council, as with any other council, as I've looked into, the city sponsors their youth council. And so at one time, I think Mr. Richard Bentley, Mayor Bentley, had the council going under his term. And so I know, Mr. Griffin and I talked about it. I know it was on in our budget as an item, but he couldn't find it. So it was just that it was no funding there, but they still had it listed. So if you all please look at that. And I want to try to allow Ms. Shinholster, go ahead and get that up and running. We have to get patient process going to the students as well. And so then my thoughts to that Ms. Shinholster and Ms. Griffin were that maybe we'll start out with eight. I know a lot of cities have 12 and above. And the eight would give us our seats council members, one that could learn a representation of the mayor, and then that extra person that could be an alternate, but also learn at the same token in the terms of the city management. But still giving them a wide overview of even what the city attorneys does for the city of Millersville. Last week was administrative assistance week. So Mr. Griffin and I made sure our administrative assistance was represented from council and our counselors. So I think they enjoyed that as well. And that was, we did that out of our pockets. Let me make sure I go.
You just froze up, Mayor.
And she froze.
He says she's unstable.
Don't talk about her like that.
She froze. Can you all hear me?
We can now.
Nowhere.
No movement. I didn't see anything.
Frozen.
Yeah. Also, Mr. Griffin and I kind of went over a little bit, and I'm going to leave that up to him to talk about later about the mayor and council pending possibility of looking at the salaries. So I'm going to leave that on his agenda. Also, Mr. Couch called me on Monday, Monday or Friday, and shared with me that Central Kitchen is in need of some employees and, you know, they need us to help them to make sure they get the word out. And he said he was in need of eight cooks and at least 50 employees. I did reach out and I shared with Hank this morning that I reached out to Mr. Jackson, Jonathan Jackson. And what we came up of what I told him, what I would like to see done is that we try to do an industrial job fair that would include Central State Redevelopment, Central Kitchen Project, that would include Boss Brothers, because he said they're having a problem staffing that as well. And looking at the possibility of what Triumph is going to be, hopefully he'll know something pretty soon with that. And so he's going to get on that ASAP and get with the custodian and then talk with Central Georgia Technical College and try to move forward and seeing if we can get that. Share with people all the time, you know, September's right around the corner and there will be no more unemployment as we read it and we see it now. So prepare in getting a job while the jobs are there and open. So you won't be trying scrambling, trying to get one when it has closed out. So those are the notes that I have that I want to bring up today. And then that is something for us to go back and talk about, especially with the land banking. I want you all to just kind of kick it around once. Mr. Griffin, is that going to be soon? Did you get a chance to speak to Ms.?
I did not. I was going to wait until you said something that I can, I can talk to her tomorrow and see. But, you know, our work session is probably going to be taken up for the next month or so with budget discussion. So it, just in terms of timing, it most likely will be June before we can hear from her.
Okay. All right. And I share it with them in all honesty, you know, they got to give council an opportunity Thank, let me make sure. Yes, sir, that's all I have. So at this time, I'm going to turn it back over to Mr. Griffin for a presentation.
And I'm actually going to turn it over to Mr. Jordan to discuss and share information with you all on the pension committee's recommendation to amend the pension plan.
Yeah, this ordinance amendment that you're going to have a first read on, that you're going to have a first read on tonight is an amendment that, quite frankly, has been discussed periodically, but it's never, we've never had any situations that I can recall that would bring this type of issue to the forefront. We may, we may have that shortly, and there are some others that are possibilities. Basically, the way our ordinance, our pension plan is drafted now, if you, if you are an elected official and you are a former employee of the city where you have qualified to participate in the plan, in the pension plan, if, as long as you are an elected official, because as elected officials and as appointed officials, we're also participants in the, in the plan. We are a different category, but we are participants in the plan. Right now, the way our ordinance is written, it would not allow a person who is eligible to start receiving retirement benefits from the city to become an elected official of the city or an appointed official of the city without having their employment benefits, pension benefits suspended for the time period that they are an elected official. There's always been some question as to, first of all, whether that is even constitutionally permissible, because basically what you're saying is, as a former employee of the city of Millageville, eligible to accept or qualify for retirement benefits, that if you run for elected office as a city official or you seek an appointment as a city appointee, that your pension benefits will be suspended. You'll no longer be able to receive those benefits for the period of time that you are an elected official. That is probably an equal protection issue. But according to our pension lawyer, Terry Taylor, this particular provision has existed in many municipal and pension plans for, for quite some, some time. But they are seeing that change very, very rapidly. She's done several. She represents a lot of municipal governments, county governments relative to pension matters. And, and she's definitely seeing that, that change. So we presented to the pension committee the idea of amending our pension ordinance, our pension plan, to where a city retiree does not cease receiving their city retirement benefits if they become an elected or an appointed official. And when I talk about appointed officials, I'm talking about the charter appointee officials, the city attorney, the municipal court judge, this, this solicitor.
I didn't get that. You can also try.
My Siri is trying to talk to me, too. First time this happened. So this ordinance would, would allow, this amendment would allow for someone who has been employed by the city to, ineligible for retirement benefits, they would not lose, those benefits would not be suspended while they are an elected official. Now, they would not be entitled under this provision to receive their elected benefit. As you know, mayor and council, as well as those appointed officials I talked about, earn a pension benefit themselves. I think right now it's $40 for every year of service, $40 a month for every year of service in elected or appointed position. They would not, that individual would not be able to receive retirement by virtue of employment benefits and the elected benefits while they are serving, or the appointed benefits while they are, are serving. That is going to be a separate calculation that they will be entitled to start receiving when they are no longer an elected official. So it's, it's very straightforward. It simply says to, you know, I think right now we have Ms. Shinholster is a former employee, Mr. Griffin is a former employee, regular employee. If their eligibility to receive their pension retirement would not be impacted by the fact that they serve in either an elected position or appointed position. So that's really it in a nutshell. Again, this, this has been drafted by our pension attorney. And once, and if you approve it, she will do the proper submission. It is effective as of January 1 of this year. So it has a retroactive effective date, which has been typical of the restatement of the pension plan that we did, as well as any amendments. We hadn't had an amendment, you know, the last time the pension plan was, was overhauled, for lack of a better word, to meet IRS requirements was in 2009, when the plan was actually fully amended and restated.
Attorney, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so you're saying if you are a city employee.
Correct.
And if you want to become an elected official, you would lose your retirement benefits.
They would be suspended. If you were, you cannot be a city employee and be an elected official at the same time.
Of the city.
Okay.
Of the city, yes, of the city.
Okay. So they would be suspended until your term is over, whatever, then it picks back up?
Then it would, it would pick back up under the current plan.
Okay.
Right. So what this is changing is if a retired city employee receiving a city pension, if that employee wants to run for elected office, that employee, and that employee is, that employee's pension benefits are not suspended. They pay pension, the same pension they were receiving before they were elected.
So this, that we were doing, what it was, it wasn't the right thing to be doing?
Well, a lot of, I won't say it wasn't the right thing. A lot of folks were, apparently a lot of municipal government, I think we, this discussion came up in the pension committee, and there was some suggestion that maybe at one time elected officials didn't want former city employees running for office because they might know too much. That was the, kind of the, the humor side of the situation. Because it was, it was very, it, it really doesn't make, you know, it really doesn't make a whole lot of sense, I don't think, that somebody that's done 10, 20 in their pension benefit, and then they decide they want to run for city office, and all of a sudden their retirement could be their, other than social security, could be their only source of income, is cut off. So obviously, that would be a tremendous deterrent for former city employees running for elected city office. And that's, that's just, this is meant to correct that.
But that does not affect a sitting council person, right? This is, you're just talking about a city employee that's already employed with the city, and then they decided they want to run for office, they just couldn't get both retirements at the same time.
Right. Right now, if they ran, they wouldn't get any retirement until they were no longer in But that, that elected city official that's a former retiree would not be eligible to collect their city elected official accrued benefit until they were no longer in office. Number one, that benefit is calculated, you know, based on an annual year of service as an elected official. And so that calculation would be an ongoing, you know, every year it would, it would change. And pension plans are not set up for, for that type of, you know, they're defined benefit plans, so they are not set up for recalculations of benefits as such.
So the time, the terms or the years that that person is out as an elected official, that time does not count, right?
That, as the time that they are an elected official counts for the elected official pension amount, okay? But they can't receive that while they are still serving.
Got you, okay.
Under, under this amendment, they'll be able to receive their, the pension plan, the pension benefit that they earned as an employee.
Okay.
That will keep going, but they won't be able to receive both of them until, until they're no longer a city official.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
And I, I want to mention something. First of all, the pension committee voted unanimously to, to hand this over in favor of changing. Also, the way the pension plan reads, an employee of the city can't run for an elected office of the city. An employee can run for an elected office otherwise. In other words, they could run for, they could be an employee of the city and run for a county commission seat and hold it while still holding their job. But they are denied being able to, and rightfully so, being able to be an employee and run for a city elected office. But this, as it is written, also deters somebody from once they are no longer a city employee and they're drawing their well-earned retirement, they can't turn around and offer that expertise that they have from 30, 40 years of service or whatever, back to the city by running for elected office without losing their pension for that time that they served. And it's just, we just saw it as a complete deterrent of some well-intentioned individuals that have a lot of knowledge that may be able to serve this city in, in a very good manner. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Well said.
It just, yeah. I'm trying to put it in something other than legalese.
Yeah, well. I understood it.
So that's something that you all have voted to go into effect as of now or not in.
It'll actually go into effect January 1 of this year, 2021.
The pension committee just voted to send it forward to council for their consideration and did so with a unanimous vote for council to look at this and changing it so that a retired employee may run and not have to suffer consequences of losing their pension.
Any other questions for Mr. Jordan or Mr. Chambers on this ordinance? It will actually, it's actually on the agenda for the regular meeting at 6:30, so.
That's your first read.
That's the first read, that's correct. All right. Well, that, I'm assuming that means that there are, are no more. I'm going to try to share my screen with you all, of those of you that can see it. It's been kind of a comedy of arrows tonight, so if it doesn't work, who will be surprised, right? But let me, let me do this right quick.
My phone has been knocked out twice. I've had to call back in, so you'll have to keep looking at it because I don't know if it'll, I don't know why it's doing that. It never has before.
I think we got some gremlins in our system tonight.
Yeah. Ms. Walden, you look like you're in here twice.
Well, I, I was in there and I had to call back and get in there, and then a while ago it went out, had to call back again, so.
Well, I'm not, I'm not going to remove either one of her, because I'm not real sure which one she's using. I think I know which one she's using, but. I'm not going to remove either one of them. All right, let's see if I can share this here.
We'll have to look at that a little closer.
Okay, let me know.
Okay. For those of you that are looking, can you see my screen now? Okay. All right. This is going to be kind of quick because obviously you all have not gotten the numbers yet. That is in, in a folder for you all downstairs. And those of you that are not here, we will get those to you tomorrow. You can pick them up from your box if you want us to deliver them. We'll be happy to do that. But I want to, first of all, kind of review some assumptions that we made about the 2020, 2021 budgets and tell you how we ended up there, let you know the personnel requests from the department heads to, so that you can see what, what level of assistance they're looking for, and then give you two things that as city manager, I'm recommending that we attempt to do during this budget process. And as I said, the figures are downstairs. I'll make sure that this presentation is a part of what's in your folder, as well as the, both the department head request and the outside agency request documentation for you to take a look at. But when we, when we started looking at the 2020, 2021 budget, we were about two months into a pandemic that I was hoping was not going to last much more than about two months. But even with that, we, we were very conservative in our budgeting. And the assumptions that we made was, first of all, that revenue would decrease, and we actually decreased our revenue estimates by 5% in putting, putting the budget together. I'm happy to say that while general fund revenue did decrease a little bit, there was some CARES Act funds that you all know that I've been reporting to you all about periodically that helped us over that hump, not only with some of the decrease in normal revenue, but also helped us over the hump in terms of some, some atypical expenditures that we had to make because of COVID. Those typically revolved around providing the funding for the two weeks of payments that initially the federal government required for someone who was diagnosed with COVID. And then you all agreed after that was no longer a federal mandate to extend that through those funds for our city employees through June 30th. Part of that money came in, in FY 19 and 20, and then the remainder of those funds came in after July 1, so they came in in 2020 and in, in 2021. So they, they were helpful. We actually were very good stewards of those funds and still have some of those funds remaining. And that was my intention, at least through June 30th, since you all were, were kind enough to extend the two-week payment for. for, for those diagnosed with COVID. I wanted to make sure there was enough in that revenue item to cover those. Fortunately, as numbers have began to decrease in our county, the numbers of our employees have been to, begin to decrease as well. And that was a good thing. Just as an aside, in case you did not see it, last week's North Central Health District COVID summary report, for the first time since they have been putting it out, showed Baldwin County as having a level of low spread. So that is really good news. We had had substantial spread two weeks, two reports prior to that. And to be honest with you, I was very concerned that we were gonna have another spike based on spring break. But fortunately for this county, at least with the numbers that were reported last Tuesday, that was not the case. I suspect that report will come in while we're in this meeting tonight and usually comes in on Tuesday evening or Wednesday morning. And so I'll be anxious to see what those numbers are. I will say, since I'm on the topic, that I have asked, I asked department heads in our department head executive staff meeting two weeks ago to please send me the numbers of their staff people that had had both shots, had had one shot either, and were waiting on their second shot or had had the Johnson and Johnson vaccine to only have one shot and the ones that had not had any shots. I didn't ask for names. I just simply wanted numbers. And I, I was, I was surprised at the numbers. The numbers were extremely low. And even, even in the, even in the first responder area. So I was surprised at, at what those numbers were. But hopefully that would not, will not come back to cause us issues with, with the city employees. Certainly, that's everybody's right to determine what they want to do. But I was, I was really surprised at, at the level of, the, the low level of vaccinations that we had across city staff. There are all kinds of things that all kinds of cities are doing in order to try to up that. And, you know, we can certainly have some conversations about that. They're voluntary. They are monetary. They are time off. There's even three cities that I've recognized on the city manager's listserv page that if someone has not had the vaccination and they get COVID, then they do not get their two weeks of COVID pay. They have to actually take leave. So that's what y'all are doing, Ms. Shinhozer. So there's some things we can look at out there if y'all are interested in it. GMA has also done a really good job of putting together a vaccination campaign. And I'm gonna be putting some information together on that during the week and sending it out to you all and make sure you're okay with us posting it, that it is the, the city's thought on that. And if so, then we'll get it posted on our websites and on, on our social media pages. But, so that's what happened with revenue in the 2020, 2021 budget. The other, another assumption that we made with the 2021 budget was that we wanted to maintain the current level of personnel spending amounts. And we have done that. No one found themselves without employment from the city of Milledgeville because of, of COVID. So I'm very, I'm very pleased and proud of that and happy to say that we were able to meet that requirement. And, and, and some of that had to do with the fact that revenue was a little bit better than we anticipated. But of course, we got that one shot in the arm from, from the CARES Act. The third assumption that we made was that operating spending had to be decreased. And it was decreased initially by 10%, if you remember. And while we did not, across the board, reinstate that 10% in January, there were some departments that needed to expend some additional monies than they had in their budget based on that 10% decrease. And anytime they wanted to do that, that had, had to come directly to me for approval. And typically, if it was an emergency situation, or always if it was an emergency situation, I approved it. So we were able to, to maintain our operating spending where we needed to. And I appreciate the department heads and all of our staff doing that. I also made the assumption that we might have some adjustments and amendments throughout the, the budget cycle. We will be able to take care of those and to true everything up with our normal budget amendments at the end of the fiscal year like we typically do. So I really anticipated those budget adjustments and amendments might come about because our revenue was not as strong as we had hoped it was, would be. But since it was, then that did not become an issue. And I'm also happy to say that most services and repairs did not lag. I mean, obviously, the ones that were absolutely required were met. We even had some, some stormwater projects that were not complete emergencies, but, but were on what Mr. Thomas calls his hot list. And we were able to take care of some of those. We were also able to take care of a, of a longstanding sewer issue in the 100 block of North Wayne Street that I was very happy to, to get taken care of because those people have been struggling down there with that for, for quite some time, even prior to, to my tenure as city manager. So we were able to actually do some things during the year. If you remember, we had the, the big expenditure for the line that will serve in Baldwin State Prison and Geo Prison. We managed to use some of the CARES Act money to take care of that. So all in all, we have had a, a, a good year based on the things that we faced. I will tell you that across the board statewide, sales tax collections were high. You may remember that at the beginning of the 2020 General Assembly Session, during the first week before they have a recess for budget hearings, a legislation was passed that had actually come up initially in 2019 where sales tax collections would take place on online orders. That was passed during the first week of the 2020 session and the governor signed it immediately. So I think during the pandemic, that was extremely helpful. And I anticipate that that will continue to, to be helpful to the city of Milledgeville on our, our lost funds that we receive as well as on our SPOLOST funds that we have begun receiving through, through the Service Delivery Strategy Agreement. So those are the assumptions that we made. That gives you kind of a, a, a quick look at, at how we came, how we have come through this budget year so far. We still have a couple of months to, to go on it. But I'm, I'm confident that we will be able to, to, to be able to take care of some things that we didn't think we were gonna be able to take care of this budget year. And also, just as an aside, on Wednesday, excuse me, Thursday morning, I will be attending a webinar, which is the first offering that has come out to share with us some information on the American Rescue Plan funds and what we might be able to do with those. So really, all we know about those is we think we know about how much that will be based on per capita. But I look forward to, to reporting to you what I learned in that webinar of some things that may be able to do based on that funding.
Mr. Griffin, I'm gonna be on that webinar with you as well, but I want to ask a quick question since you're on that part before you go on. Now, the next two drops, I mean, the next drop for log cabin and SPOLOST, will that be included sometime soon? Are you, are you including this with the assumptions already?
We actually will not have, we, we have an additional transfer or an additional payment of the water system transfer coming that is separate from SPOLOST. I anticipate that we most likely will get that. If we haven't gotten it by May 15th, I'll be sending an invoice for it. I anticipate the potential of receiving another SPOLOST check before this week is out, based on figures that Ms. Hudson with the county and I have been sharing back and forth. Provided collections stay within the range that we have estimated they will. We should get a check for April. We should also get a check for May and then probably will not get another check until November because they have a, both a principal and an interest bond payment in June. And then the money or the funding will have to, to collect back up into what's required to be kept in escrow in order to pay the bonds based on the, based on the agreement. So to answer your question, Mayor, probably the easiest way for me to ask, answer it is I anticipate by May 15th, hopefully having two, two different checks from the county. One for the water system transfer that was done for Water's Edge and then also SPOLOST check, at least one more SPOLOST check and possibly two additional SPOLOST checks.
And that's what, I just want to know, was it calculated in what you were giving us?
It is not. It, I am, I have made the decision to take what we are getting for the water system transfer and putting it in reserve to make sure that our calculations on what we would be making based on wholesale sales of water to the county would be what we anticipated. So that money is not in, in the budget. And the SPOLOST money is not in the budget that you will receive the numbers for tomorrow. I need to have a conversation with Mr. Jordan to, to see if we need to revert back to a previous SPOLOST agreement in order to be able to know where those funds can be expended or if we can, if we can dole them out to some areas where we already have SPOLOST money, so. But I, but I will say that I think there are some things that, that we're gonna need to do for '21, '22 that we'll be able to utilize that SPOLOST money for. And those things have not been included in this general, in this budget that you get the figures on tomorrow or tonight, if you choose.
And I know you're rolling right along and I don't want to stop your flow, but when you were talking about that GMA, I wanted also to kind of, because they're still offering that one-shot campaign, right?
They are, and that's the information that I'm gonna put together to send out to you all to make sure everybody's okay with that coming out under the, under the information from the city. The, it's worth the shot campaign is what they've still got. And it's going on until the end of June. Okay? Anything else, Mayor?
Let me say one thing about GMA before you move on, because I should have said this in my opening. But Ms. Shinhozer was selected to be a mentor with GMA. I don't know if everybody received the email that they sent out, but she will now be mentoring other people. So I want to let y'all know we turned her Leeswick City Milledgeville driver's license to go mentor somebody with all that great knowledge. So kudos to Mrs. Shinhozer.
Well, and while we're giving kudos, the mayor received her certificate of excellence from GMA. I actually, she told me I could open the box. It was on her desk. So I did and, and checked it out. And, and Dr. Lee has actually been named vice chairman of the Training Council for GMA for the coming years. So we are, we are putting Milledgeville on the GMA map. And I actually have my second meeting in two weeks as part of the Advisory Council for GMA that they asked me to serve on this year, so we.
Good job, Milledgeville.
Anything else, Mayor?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's fine. I want to very quickly go through with you in six minutes, the, the personnel request and increases submitted by the department heads for this upcoming budget. I want you to know what they are. I want to tell you from the get-go, none of them were funded. But that's not to mean that we can't look at them and see if there are ways to, to have them funded. Our PD requested four additional sworn officers, and you'll see the documentation in the budget packet, as well as a 7% salary increase for sworn personnel. That's an area, as you can well imagine, that's getting more and more difficult to, to staff. And Chief Swickert felt that that 7% salary increase would make him competitive. But I think you'll see in the figures that, that, that figure would have been cost prohibitive. But I am gonna share something with you about some potential salary increases before I get finished. Utility maintenance, you know, our utility maintenance folks and our public works folks, as well as police for that matter, have found themselves having a lot more area to work with the Central State Hospital property, especially as the development of that has begun to, to ramp up. So you'll see in the documentation, oftentimes, a big part of their funding or their increase request was based on the fact that they are having to, to do more on the grounds of Central State than they had been typically as, as development has ramped up. And we'll be looking at that. We may, at some point in time, want to examine the possibility of some impact fees or that kind of thing, depending on what we find we're needing to deal with out there. But utility maintenance asked for an additional maintenance operator as well as two additional utility service workers. Water and Sewer asked for two waste treatment operators so that the waste treatment plant could operate manned 24 hours. And also asked for a 5% increase for the Assistant Superintendent for Wastewater. Fire Department wanted to create six first lieutenant positions and reclassify the personnel in those positions. That, that initially would not have had a monetary cost to it. But I actually had a conversation with Chief Collier yesterday and told him that I had some concerns. We, we did away with the senior sergeant's positions and moved everybody to lieutenant. And I had a concern with creating another level of lieutenant's position. So we're gonna see if maybe we can, might be able to take care of that with some station captains and still do that without a monetary cost. And without a monetary cost also, he asked if the possibility for the fire marshal to be reclassified from captain to battalion chief. Stormwater requested one supervisor and two laborers. Streets and sidewalks requested two street maintenance workers. They requested a receptionist in the public works administration area and then a facilities maintenance worker in the central garage. Right now, someone who is termed a mechanic in terms of their personnel position is the person who is called out for facilities maintenance for the city when it's not contracted out. And we may look at the possibility of doing that and just replacing one of the, the mechanics with that position and it not be a new position, but just reclassified. But that's, that's something we can look at as we work through the, the budget process. So what did we do with the figures? Well, we basically worked this year to get back to what we had hoped our 2020, 2021 planned budget would be before COVID. So we have gone, we have added the 5% revenue projections back. We have added the 10% operating cost back. There's some areas that, that operating cost was funded even a little bit more based on some requests that we got from the department heads. But you'll see what those numbers are. And, and certainly, you know, we, we look forward to discussing anything that's in those numbers that you have questions about as we work through the, the budget process. Two things that I am requesting, and it's, first of all, is for us to, to look at the possibility of, of a staff compensation increase in the 2021, 2022 budget. We're still crunching some numbers to see where that might come from. But you'll see in your budget packet what that would cost and how that would be phased in. And I'm also asking, beginning with the budget year in July 1, that it be the first phase of reduction in the base water rate that water customers currently have on their bills. Right now, the base water rate is 3,000 gallons for a minimum. If you remember when Kenny Green from Turnip Seed was here, he recommended phasing that in over a three-year period as to begin to start putting some money in reserve for the work that we will need to do on the water treatment plant and the wastewater treatment plant. And I would ask that. And I would ask that, that we do that beginning July 1. So if that happens, if you all approve that, beginning July 1, the minimum use or base water rate on a water bill will be 2,000 gallons as opposed to 3,000 gallons. And it will have very little effect on, on residential cost of water. And if you remember the presentation that Kenny did, it will, it will, the first year generate about $38,000 that we would then put in reserve as we start to look at ways to fund the water treatment and wastewater treatment renovations that need to occur and need to occur badly, both from the standpoint of age of the plants and from the standpoint of requirements from EPD and EPA. So our schedule, I sent you this on, via email. But I'll just remind you, in the morning, the examination copy of the proposed budget will be in the City Hall Business Office and on the city internet sites. We have already scheduled a called budget work session for next Tuesday, May 4th at 5:30. We will start that meeting out with the outside agency directors and department heads speaking with you about their request and sharing with you how things have gone in their areas during this year. And then you can see where the dates fall. My hope is that we can get through the negotiations that we need to. And we will be in a position where we can actually have the first reading in the public hearing by May 25th and then adoption of the budget, even with changes that we might make, need to make June 1st on June 8th. Obviously, we have an additional meeting in June that we can move to if we need to. But we'll have to time that appropriately for, for the, the notices that have to go in the paper. You'll notice one of the things, just touching on what the mayor mentioned that I, I didn't discuss here, but we, we certainly have information in your budget packet to discuss if you all choose, is a, an increase in, in mayor and council compensation, as, as was brought out a couple of meetings ago, just a very quick discussion. But I've shared some information with you on that from DCA. And we can certainly make that part of the discussion if we need to. Just remember, we will, if that occurs, we will need to advertise that for two weeks prior to the vote. And the vote can be taken with the budget vote, but it would not go and actually go into effect until January 1 of 2022, based on state law. So I know you don't have much to ask questions about now, but I'll be happy to answer any questions that anybody has based on the information that I've given you. And I look forward to working through what will be my third budget process with y'all. It's crazy that we've already gone through three budget processes together with me in this role.
Mr., I hate to interrupt you, Mr. Griffin, but we're at, it's about 6:32. So if anybody have any other questions, you know, with the last part of it, let's move on to the, the next meeting and then they can contact you. And we'll talk about it at a later time.
I'm, I'm done, Mayor.
Did you hear me, Mr. Griffin?
You, you paused, but I'm done.
Okay, okay. What I was saying is let us go ahead and close this meeting out because we're a little over by three minutes.
Okay.
And then if anyone has any questions in reference to the last part that you wanted to ask about the salary budget increase, we'll get back with you on that.
I can communicate that with you directly, it'll be fine. Thank you.
Yes, sir. All right, then if there's no other discussions on the agenda for tonight, I'm going to ask for a motion to close out the work session at this time. The proper motion is second. Did you get that, Mr. Genusen?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Walden? Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
The meeting stands adjourned.